Committee meeting, February 15th, 2024.
The Special Health and Safety Committee meeting is called to order at 6:00 PM. Members present are C. Aaron Sharick, James Mee, and myself, Vicky DeShawn, Chair. First, just want to remind everyone to please silence your phones. And next is public participation. Anyone wishing to talk, please approach the podium and state your name and address.
Greg White, 1125 Hellcrest Drive. I prepared a package for you guys, basically kind of things that we'd like to discuss, to kind of keep it in contents. Ordinance 53-2023, the new language is within two years of the original notice of violation. New terms will be added to this ordinance we would like to see as what is called owner-occupant. Basically, that is, the occupant does not own the property, that a person that, da-da-da, it's in the code, that owns said property but occupies said property. And then there's owner, I'm sorry, owner-occupant means where they own the property and occupy the property at the same time. Owner-non-occupant is a person, as the code states, that the owner owns the property but does not occupy the property. It's the term that's in the 2012 International Property Maintenance Code. The owner has let it for occupancy or let is the definition, which we'll talk about that, it's on the second page if you want to look at it. This repeat offender shall, we believe, should state the following. Should be only be one year for owner-non-occupant and two years for owner-occupant. Reason for that is most people that rent properties have tenants maybe only be there for a year or less, and then they move on. So how can you make someone required of something if that person no longer lives there and the new occupant comes in? Maybe they're doing the same thing, but it's a different occupant. Also, the repeater offender section should be added as Section D and not C. The original plan, the first draft that I saw, yeah?
Just for simplicity's sake, if you read what I've proposed, so if somebody had moved, it wouldn't be the same person receiving the same notice of violation. So regardless if somebody had moved, it would have to be served on a subsequent person. Regardless if it's the same property, I'm not serving it on the same person, firm, or individual, or corporation. I would have to serve a notice on a new individual. Thus, the two-year timeframe would start over.
Okay. But your violation says for the same property within two years of notification.
If a person, firm, or corporation, so it would be a different person.
Right, okay. I'll agree with you on that, that's fine. So basically, going, to going back to the reason for the last, reason for the repeat offender. Originally, and I looked it up, the original ordinance, the first one that was written, had the repeat offender as Section D. And then later it was changed to C. I think in chronological order, that as the ordinance is so stated on here, it says unlawful acts prosecution of violation, and then the original was violation of penalties, okay? And then repeat offender should be after that, to me, could in chronological order, because right now it's stating that the repeat offender is between the prosecution of violation and violation of penalties. There's no chronological order there of the code as it is written as the draft.
Right, so what you're looking at, D used to be C, and C never existed. And the reason that we would place C before D is because both B and C are different types of violations, and then D is explaining the penalty provisions. So throughout all of the revised code, your final section is going to be, it shall be unlawful, and this is the penalty for either A, a single offender, or B, repeat offenders.
That's not, we just, it was, it was never clarified in any meetings or anything how this was supposed to be done, that's why we're just asking for clarification.
Yeah, no, that's, that's just...
That's why we're here to talk about it tonight.
Right, that's the place to be.
Okay, so let's move on to the second page. We can skip over the penalty because you already addressed that. Under the 2012 International Property Maintenance Code, the general section is, basically states, a person is an individual, corporation, or partnership. An occupant is any individual living or sleeping in the building portion thereof. Let for occupancy or let to permit or provide or offer possessions of occupancy of a dwelling, dwelling units, rooming unit, building, premises or structure by a person who is or is not the legal owner of record thereof pursuant to a written or unwritten lease agreement or license, or pursuant to a written or unwritten lease agreement or license, pursuant to the record or unrecord agreement of a contract for sale of land. Basically, answering your question, Vicky, basically, there, an owner is letting the property for lease to a tenant, okay? And then it goes into the, one of the terms is occupant for the purpose of the building thereof is utilized and occupied. Operator is any person who is in, has charge or care or control of a structure or premises which is let or offered for occupancy. And then it goes in the definition of what an owner is, any person, agent, corporation, firm, that has legal interest in the property of record of the deed within the property, within the county that it holds. So our question, and then we went on to say, because there's a lot of terminology here of a person, an occupant, an occupancy, an operator, an owner, let for occupancy. And then on the next page, tenant is a person, corporation, partnership, or group, whether or not legal owner of record occupying a building or portion thereof of a unit. These are key factors in the language of the 2012 International Property Maintenance Code. Who is responsible for the property maintenance under said code? Is it duty of the code enforcement department to identify who is actually responsible for the violations within this code? Okay? The code specifically states this. If it states the owner, it states the owner. If it states the tenant, occupant, or whatever, that's the person who should be giving the violation to, not just property owners. Now, if it is deemed necessary that it's for the property owner, no problem with that. But like on grass, trash, all this other stuff, that's on the occupant by the International Property Maintenance Code. It specifically states it in there, okay? In the sections for trash and garbage, grass and everything. Plus, it also goes back to the, a contract or unwritten agreement between the property owner and the tenant, or occupant, or whatever person, or whatever individual, or whatever you want to call them. But I also found out, and I brought this up before, the 2012 Property Maintenance Code, Section 102, A 102.10, no other laws. The provisions of this code shall not be deemed to notify, nullify any provisions of local, state, or federal laws. Going back to section title 53, real property of the Higher Vice Code. In that code, there are specifics on what tenants are required and what owners are required within the Higher Vice Code. Basically, the Higher Vice Code then takes precedence over the proper International Property Maintenance Code because it can't nullify it. So now we have the Higher Vice Code section, and we have the Property Maintenance Code sections, okay? Some of the questions that we had that could be, hopefully be answered tonight. Why is the 2012 International Property Maintenance Code not enforced to the correct language of the code? Okay? Does it have to do with the owner, or does it have to do with the tenant, the occupant, the operator, the individual, the person? A person, I'm sorry, a person. Why is the code official not enforcing all codes within the 2012 Property Maintenance Code? Okay? If you can't be selective enforcement of a code unless you're going to enforce the whole code, it's the reason why the code is there, okay? So if the code official sees other things, or observes other problems, then why isn't the code only used for certain areas? You've adopted the whole code as a whole. Why is the code official, when seeing other violations on other properties, not enforcing these same codes? It's come to my attention several times since I've spoke, that the code official, when pointed out other properties in the same area of violations, that nothing has been done.
Go ahead. I'll respond to this. So first, Title 53 of the Higher Vice Code has to do with real property landlord-tenant laws, but not property maintenance specific. So it's not, it's delineating your rights under deeds, under landlord-tenant law, but it's not highlighting how the cities or municipalities are to handle property maintenance. I mean, there are some provisions throughout the code that deal with building codes and manufacturers. I can't read from this far away, but...
It's called 5321.05.
Okay.
Okay, it's tenant obligations.
Under a lease.
Under a rental agreement, correct?
Yeah, absolutely, has nothing to do with property maintenance.
So basically, it says that they have to keep the premises safe and sanitary. They have to dispose of all rubbish, garbage, and other waste in a clean, safe, and sanitary manner, okay? Keep all plumbing fixtures in the dwelling unit and use them as clean, keep them as clean and in condition as permitted.
Right, and those are between tenants and landlords. Those are rights and obligations when a tenant and a landlord are dealing with each other, not between a city and landowners or occupants.
Okay, well, I'll refer that question back down to the state then.
Okay, absolutely.
I mean, I'm just saying...
Landlord-tenant law.
There is a landlord-tenant law, but it also affects what tenant responsibilities are.
Responsibilities towards the property that they're renting from landlords.
And even in the International Property Maintenance Code, it states in there too, okay, that a tenant must keep certain things by the codes.
Oh, I agree.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
That's, that's all in my leases.
Huh?
When I do my lease, that's all in my leases.
Right, but the only thing is, why is the, why is the property owner being cited and not the tenant being cited because according to the Property Maintenance Code...
They both should be cited, I see your...
Okay, I'm saying is, if you have a lease agreement with a tenant, okay, that's, that, legal obligation is between you and me, right? Okay?
Correct.
But then, when you're citing the property code, International Property Maintenance Code, then you should be citing the person of responsibility, like the code says you should be doing, okay? It's not technically the property owner, okay? It's the tenant, or person, or individual, or occupant, as it states in the International Property Maintenance Code. It's their responsibility to be cited and not the property owner. It specifically states in here, I mean, we, I'm not going to sit here, and you can read it, but it's all in here.
Yeah.
I mean, all right, so let's move on. So some of the other things that I found, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry, I didn't want to interrupt you.
Yeah, so your first main question is, basically, well, like you were saying, well, when do you cite a tenant, when do you cite a landlord? I think that those are legal arguments that could be brought forth in court indicating that I have the wrong proper party, which is something that we could at that point discuss once we have gotten there, or once I have sent a notice out. But regardless of the status of a tenant or a landlord, the landlord still has a obligation to maintain the property in a safe and sanitary condition. The landlord also has the ability to then turn around and say to your tenant, I just got a notice of violation, what's going on? We don't always have the ability, especially in multi-unit buildings, to know who's the tenant. Water bills may not be registered in a tenant's name. The person may not have registered their tenants on the city's tenant roster. So a lot of times, we send notices of violation in order to begin a dialogue with whomever, and we would like a warm body. We're not out there just trying to drag people into court. The court's the last resort. We would prefer to have all of these things resolved between phone calls and a quick, hey, I didn't know that my tenant had moved out last week and left six car, six couches in the backyard. So we're trying to create a dialogue. Number two, why is the code official not enforcing all of the codes within the 2012 International Property Maintenance Code? So I think that we do a good job enforcing a broad variety of them, but we also do have discretion in what we enforce. The prosecutor's office has discretion in what specific terms and conditions. I know that sidewalks was brought up. I don't find it incredibly valuable to cite Grandma for her sidewalk that the tree roots has destroyed, for not keeping and maintaining a safe and sanitary sidewalk free of cracks and crevices and all of that other stuff, when Grandma is on a social security income and can not afford to pay $5,000, $10,000 to have 20 yards of sidewalk completed. So we do use discretion. It doesn't also do me any good to cite the guy that's property is registered out of a holding company in Puerto Rico. It's a waste of 68 cents or whatever to send him a violation because his eve spouts are falling off of his house for the seventh summer in a row. The mail doesn't come back from Puerto Rico, but he doesn't respond to me. So it's just a discretionary thing. And then when Mr. Grove goes out to investigate any property, be it my property or whatever, he not only cites the initial complaint, whatever, whatever brought him to that area, which is usually a telephone call, or a written complaint from a person in the community, but then he also looks around the property, maintaining his view, I mean, he doesn't go on private property, we stay in alleys or other sidewalks. He's been instructed, we absent some sort of agreement between landowners or otherwise, we stay in private or public right-of-ways and other things. But he'll cite you or send you a notice indicating all of the violations that he sees. And if he's out at House 111, and next door 112 has the same problems, everybody will get those same violations. Some of the issue may be that people don't necessarily think that we're pursuing a property because, well, Bob's house three stories down has the same property and nobody's doing anything. Well, that may not actually be the case because Bob may have already been cited, Bob may have had, be in a different step in the process, he may have been given a written notice, and now we're waiting for the service of summons to come through the police department. Bob may have been granted a 30-day extension because Bob just had surgery. I mean, I think that we don't turn a blind eye to any violations. We do not obviously see every violation. And we do, I mean, yeah, we don't enforce every single code or every single provision, but we do enforce almost everything we can.
If you got a complaint, would you...
If I got a complaint on a sidewalk, I would call them back and explain our issue, yeah?
Okay.
Can we start the dialogue with a phone call?
I mean, we could, but 90% of the people I don't, I'm lucky if they respond to a letter. I mean, so there are certain landlords and certain individuals that, yes, I, we go and we talk to them, we knock on their door. There's the house on West Warren Street, across from the one that just got torn down. We've talked to him multiple times, he's an older gentleman with cancer, we're trying to work with him, as opposed to drag him through the mud. So yes, we create a dialogue with him. But a lot of these are, you know, if landlord, if you're a landlord, I don't necessarily know who your tenant is, so sending a letter...
So what I'm saying is, just say, just give me a call, you got a problem with one of my properties, one of Kenny's properties.
And a lot of times...
Give us a call.
Yeah.
I mean, that's the way to start a dialogue, it's not by a certified letter because I am offended by a certified letter, I'm sorry, but all it took was a phone call to fix a problem.
The other problem, and I, and I would say that that is true for some responsible landlords, it's not true of all landlords. And I would also say that if I give you a call and nothing happens, I then have to start the process. You know, the reason that a notice is issued is because that's what the code requires, because it puts you on notice and puts me on notice, and there's a legal traceable starting point.
Correct, but you put in that file, I gave him a call on such and such date, he didn't take care of it in 10 days, so now I'm sending him a letter. That's what I'm saying, start a dialogue at a lower level than sending a certified letter to them.
Did you want to speak, Kevin?
Yeah, I kind of differ from you on that though, Jim, in that, yeah, I think we're, our brains are kind of trained that when we get a certified letter, I mean, something's really bad, right? You know, it's kind of like getting sent to the principal's office. But I'm looking at it from his standpoint, you know, he's asking to include a paragraph here to make his department's jobs easier. And I think one of the things is, is if we do a certified letter, yeah, it might look like, oh no, what is this? But it also is that proof that when you do have to take it to litigation, that, you know, you can't say, well, I never got the phone call, or, you know, phone records might show that he called me, but that's not what we talked about. So it does put it in writing, so I kind of understand that point. I get, I get where you're coming from, you feel like you're in trouble when you get it, but I'm not offended by it, I understand the need for it to...
I don't know if I'm embarrassed by it, I guess because it's in my lease that these steps will be taken to take...
Well, and I think that also, if I could continue, that also gives you the ability to take that to your tenant. Look what I've got, you know, it's like, hey, I got a phone call.
This part, at that point, I'm ready to victim, so...
Yeah. Yeah, and I think that, that certified letter might help in that case.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's an idea, thanks, Vicky.
So going back to what you said about, you know, about parties going to court, okay, even in the section 106 of the Property Maintenance Code, it says, any person who shall violate a provision of this code, or fail to comply therewith, or with any other requirements thereof, shall be prosecuted within the limits provided by state and local laws. Each day of violation continues after the due notice that has been served and shall be deemed a separate offense. Going back to what you said, okay, a person, as definition in the code, is an individual, corporation, partnership, or any other group acting as a unit. Going back to my premises, a tenant and occupant, as per this code, is a person, is a individual, okay? Has due responsibility to this code, just like owners have due responsibility to this code. Once again, then if you're going to cite the owners, why not cite the tenant, person, individual, occupant, or whatever it states in this legal terms of the code, okay? Occupant or whatever, to cite both of them? Why just cite the property owner? To me, that's discrimination, you know, because you're only citing one, but you're not citing the other.
Well, it's not discrimination.
Oh, okay.
Discrimination would be if I were not citing someone based upon their gender orientation, sex, religion, national origin, age, veteran status. So no, it's not discrimination, it's simply, if we do not cite, if we do not cite a tenant nine times out of ten, it's because I don't know who the tenant is, I cannot find the tenant. But I will tell you...
Right there, you can make a quick phone call to the landlord-owner to find out who the tenant is. Plus, if you don't know who the tenant is, and there's a single-use water meter, okay, on that...
Well, and you're suggesting that I don't, but 90% of the time, if they have a water bill with the city, that's who we do initiate contact with, is the tenant, because, yeah, they're easier to get ahold of. If I send a letter to Jim's property in Jim's name, Jim's not going to know about it because his tenant's going to throw it away. If I send a property to Jim's tenant in Jim's tenant's name and tell him about it, then they're probably going to be more likely to do something about it, because now they're on notice, and I have the ability to pursue those people.
Mr. Byers?
So if Jim gives a letter in the mail, that a property he owns that he's leasing out to somebody else is in violation, and Jim were to call you, like, hey, Joe Smith lives there, what do you do in that instance currently?
Currently, we would send out a second violation to Joe Smith.
Do you cease going after the owner at that point?
I think we go after them both at that point.
Okay.
Okay.
Just to get you, as many people, as many feet in the fire.
That's what we're trying to work out, is this, go ahead, Vicky.
I'm sitting here and I'm looking at this ordinance, and my question to you, Mr. White, is, can we look at the ordinance and we look at 1355.99 penalty A? Are you fine with what that says?
Yeah, as soon as a person.
Okay. I'm just thinking, this is what we're talking about...
Right, we're talking about a person, as it says right here in ordinance 53-2023, a person.
But the verbiage that is in this ordinance, you are okay with?
We have, we have no problem, as long as it's enforced the correct way.
How about B, prosecution of violation?
It still says the same thing, a person.
And this is what you have a problem with? The verbi, the word person.
Well, the word person, like I said, the definition, according to the International Property Maintenance Code, could mean all kinds of things, okay? An individual, an occupant, this and that. But if you, if, there's no problem with a person, but are you going after the right person? Are you enforcing the code on the right person? Okay? That's what we're, we're not, we're not, we have nothing against the code, but we thought the two-year thing was a little bit steep because some people would move out and, as Mr. Gurnick explained, on the record, okay, that if a new tenant comes in and another complaint comes in, then the process starts all over, correct, sir? Okay, there, see, that's what we were looking for the explanation for.
Okay, Mr. Byers?
I have two questions. I arrived a few minutes late.
No, that's okay.
For my understanding, who's we? You keep, you're referring to we?
Well, there's, there's other people in the room, Mr. Long and I have talked, and some other property owners that we've been...
Are there people that you've met with? That's what I'm trying, you're speaking off the app of somebody?
I'm sorry, there's some other local people that own rental properties that have contacted me too.
Okay, I was just trying to figure out who we was.
Yeah, I mean, there's...
And like Mrs. DeShawn just asked you, in Section B, if a person, firm, or corporation to whom the violation has been served, so it doesn't matter whether you say landlord or tenant, it's whoever was served.
Right, but is, is the right person being served? I think Jim wanted to make that...
Is that, is that set forth in this ordinance, or is that set forth under your...
Which isn't, right.
Your practices of your office?
Right, that would be practices, and those would be legal arguments that we would make.
We've had this, various forms of this in front of us for the last several years, and we get into, into the chambers here, and we get one or two people that stand up and have an argument with it, and then we stop it. And I would like to see us move somewhere on this and allow your people...
We want to see it move.
I don't disagree with that, Mr. White, but I want to see his office, be allowed to do his office's job. I think, you know, we try to put too much burden on the council, the council is the one who's going to put this document together to allow his office to do their job.
Right, but do it the way it's supposed to be done.
It's not our, it's not council's job to police if he's doing his job right or not.
Right, because he brought, mentioned that, well, we'll just take him to court, and we'll figure out who, who's responsible. I mean, why should, why should a property owner that lets out his property have to go to court to figure out who's responsible? It should be done right there in that office of who is responsible. Is it tenant, or is it the property owner? We're not saying, some of the property owners aren't saying that, yes, we're responsible for certain things.
I hear your argument, but I don't think it's with council, I think it's with his office.
Ms. Sheen?
Oh, I'm sorry. I couldn't, I didn't talk.
Well, he'd already answered multiple times that once you get a summons, then you can figure out if somebody else needs to be served. The same question's been answered seven ways since Sunday, and it keeps being brought back up as though it hasn't been. So, yeah, it, once it gets there, that's where, it's the court and the prosecution or his office and the law office that figure these things out past there. First, they have to get ahold of somebody. So, that has been stated. I'm sure we don't need to go back to it.
I don't want to go to court to find out who's legally responsible. That's why we send out notices. That's why the code requires us to send out notices. I mean, court's a last resort, because realistically, it's not the most economical use of my time, not the most economical use of the court's time. And the court is hard-pressed to really utilize what it's there for. We have meth problems in the city. We have sexual-oriented offenders throughout the county. We're not putting landlords or tenants in jail, I haven't seen it yet, for property maintenance. And you guys all know the worst property in Bucyrus. Mrs. Deshaun knows.
Excuse me?
The worst property maintenance house in Bucyrus. Exactly. She knows. Mary Street Extension. I, I've been fighting in court with that guy for 18 months, and we just set it for another pre-trial to see if maybe we can get anything done. And you guys have seen it. That was the beginning of January. It has gotten worse. Nothing has gotten done. So, I don't want to go to court, but I also don't want to have Gordon go out and continually write the same person up because the trash is piled up on his porch again. And so, this sort of streamlines it. Do we have enforcement issues that we could get better at? Absolutely. Could we get better at figuring out which properties, is a landlord taking care of those issues? Which property can we get on the tenant a little bit to help the landlord motivate the tenant? Absolutely. But this is just, I, Gordon has, every day since I've been here, since 2021, Gordon has said, "It would be nice that I wouldn't have to remind people to pick up the trash out of their yard." I said, "I understand, Gordon." So, we brought this forward.
I have one more question.
And I know somebody said grass, and then you can ask your last question. I don't know that I ever bring anybody for grass, because typically, I cite you for grass, and then use the other code section, and we mow it and put it on your property taxes, which I know the landlords don't like either. But, go.
My last question is basically for you, maybe people listening would know. If someone complains to the property maintenance, or your department, enforcement department, is that done verbally? Is it done, has to be done in writing? Can it be anonymous? If somebody calls in and says, hey, this property, blah, 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 it looks like a bunch of crap, or they're not mowing their grass, or there's been a car, or anything like that, because some people couldn't even make it tonight, they kind of wanted to know that answer. How does a resident make a formal complaint?
All of you, both.
Is there a complaint form?
There is a complaint form in the mayor's office. We also have some complaint forms in the property maintenance office. You can stop by the law director's office and explain what the issue is. You can call and leave a voicemail on my phone. You can call and leave a voicemail on, you know, at the mayor's office. They always pass those along.
We've had instances where as a council member, we're notified, and then we send them on to you.
So, we do, we take any sort of complaints. And you can make an anonymous complaint, but, and then on the flip side, just because you make an anonymous complaint, or just because somebody, your neighbor is mad about your, your garbage can was out 24 hours longer than it should be. Every complaint, Gordon goes and reviews, because the court has required us to have pictures of what we see the first time we make contact with that property. So, yeah, confirmation. Just because you call and say, you know, my property's trashed, we then have to independently verify that.
That's right.
We don't just send out notices based solely on, into anything.
The only thing, the last thing that I wanted to bring up, and I understand Mr. Myers's point of view, but it was brought to my attention, and I looked it up. On the Means of Appeal, okay, says in section 11, Means of, section 111 of the International Property Maintenance Code, it says, "In their membership of the board, the Board of Appeals shall consist of a minimum of three members who are qualified by experience and training to pass on matters pertaining to property maintenance, and who are not employees of the jurisdiction." So, somebody asked me about that, and I'm like, well, those people are appointed by the mayor. But according to the Property Maintenance Code, if you're on the Appeals Board, that you have to have education and training in property maintenance to actually be on that board, or you have to be dismissed. Because it also, it says in there, there should be alternative members in the Property Maintenance Code section for the appeals. Says that disqualifying of a member, and also alternative members. But it specifically states in the code that these people must have experience and training to pass on matters pertaining to the property maintenance, and who are not employees of the jurisdiction.
Yeah. And so, most of, I can't remember exactly, but Mr. Boris, I believe, is on... Bill, do you know who's on it right now?
...on property maintenance appeals, as well as myself, Steve Piper.
So, these are people that have been involved in construction and in the industry, maintenance and repairs.
Floyd Farmer.
Floyd Farmer. I mean, I don't, they don't have any specific certificate of training, but just based upon their life experience and their employment historically, have a knowledge about these types of issues.
It was brought up that somebody said, why is, doesn't this board have to have some kind of qualifications? And it actually says they have to have experience and training.
I would claim that years of employment would be training and experience.
Okay. Thank you.
So, what did we come out of this discussion with? Is anything being changed?
Mr. Stuckert would like to speak.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Stuckert.
You did not ask for anybody else.
Excuse me?
Thank you. My name is Bill Stuckert. I reside at 205 North Spring Street. Regarding proposed ordinance number 53-2023, I understand this ordinance is intended to modify section 1355.99 penalty of the Property Maintenance Code of the City of Bucyrus to allow the law director's office to more efficiently and economically deal with repeat offenders of the Property Maintenance Code. I've heard statements that there is a conflict between the Ohio Revised Code and the Property Maintenance Code of the City of Bucyrus as to the responsibility for property maintenance. In researching this issue, I found the following information. ORC Chapter 5321, Section 5321.O5, Tenant Obligations. This section states that tenants are responsible for maintaining that part of the premise they occupy and use in a safe and sanitary manner. Section 5321.O4, Landlord Obligations, however, states landlords must comply with the requirements of all applicable building, housing, health, and safety codes that materially affect health and safety. Similarly, ORC Section 7351, titled Notice to Owner to Cut Noxious Weeds or Remove Litter, asks Service, A, upon written information that noxious weeds are growing on lands in a municipal corporation and are about to spread or mature seeds, the legislative authority shall cause a written notice to be served upon the owner, leasie, agent, or tenant having charge of such land, notifying him that noxious weeds are growing on such lands, and that they must be cut and destroyed within five days after the service of such notice. And B, upon a finding by the legislative authority that litter has been placed on lands in a municipal corporation and has not been removed, and constitutes a detriment to public health, the legislative authority of the municipal corporation shall cause a written notice to be served upon the owner and, if different, upon the leasie, agent, or tenant having charge of the littered land, notifying him that litter is on the land, and that it must be collected and removed within 15 days after service of the notice. The legislative, excuse me, the legislative authority referenced in this section is you, the city council, and you, this committee represents the city council here. You accomplish this through the authority the previous city council passed on to the law director's office and code enforcement officer Gordon Grove by the adoption of the International Property Maintenance Code, International Property Maintenance Code of 2012, for the purpose of controlling public health and safety when it pertains to properties within the city. The International Property Maintenance Code of 2012, Section 301.2, Responsibility, in the General Requirement Section, states occupants of a dwelling unit, rooming unit, or housekeeping unit are responsible for keeping in a clean, sanitary, and safe condition that part of the dwelling unit, rooming unit, housekeeping unit, or premises which they occupy and control. But Section 301.2 also states, "The owner of the premises shall maintain the structures and exterior property in compliance with these requirements, except as otherwise provided for in the code." It also states, "A person shall not occupy as owner, occupant, or permit another person to occupy premises which are not in a sanitary and safe condition, and which do not comply with these requirements." So, although I do agree that tenants and/or occupants are responsible for maintaining that portion of the property they occupy and control in clean, safe, and sanitary condition, I interpret both the Ohio Revised Code and the International Property Maintenance Code of 2012 to hold the property owners ultimately responsible for property maintenance, for property which they own. The reference of both codes as to responsibility for property maintenance by the tenants and/or occupants gives the property owner the legal grounds necessary to enforce the regulations on the tenants and/or occupants of their property. As a member of Bucyrus Property Maintenance Appeals Board, unless otherwise advised by the law director of the City of Bucyrus, this is the interpretation I will use to make my decision on issues of appeals that come before the Property Maintenance Appeals Board. In 2016, the city administration started a campaign to rid the city of blighted properties. Approximately 300 notices of violations were sent to property owners of properties in the City of Bucyrus. Many were minor violations that greatly disturbed the recipients of those notices. At that time, because the International Property Maintenance Code was quite lengthy and just consisted of regulations that were thought to be more stringent than necessary for our community, a suggestion was made by a council member to establish an ad hoc committee to streamline the Property Maintenance Code. The council and the majority at that time approved of the idea, but it never materialized. In June of 2021, Law Director Rob Ratliff submitted a draft for a new Property Maintenance Code to replace the International Property Maintenance Code of 2012 as the City of Bucyrus Property Maintenance Code. In reviewing that document, I believe it would be a good replacement with a few changes. I am suggesting the formation of an ad hoc committee consisting of no less than seven people total from the Health and Safety Committee, Property Maintenance Appeals Board, and from the residents of the City of Bucyrus to review and suggest changes to that draft, and include content and suggestion, and suggested changes to proposed ordinance 53-2023 to be adopted as Property Maintenance Code for the City of Bucyrus. Thank you. Any questions?
The document that you referred to, that Mr. Ratliff prepared?
Yes.
I assume that was never passed.
It was never passed. No.
Do we know if somebody, you have it? Okay.
I think I've got it in email.
I got it.
Okay.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's something, not just procedurally, we could refer at the next full council meeting to create that ad hoc committee. But now that you've brought it up, that's something that council can consider.
Okay. Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to speak? Mr. Long?
Ken Long, 625.
Just wait one second. Let Mr. Me handle his business there real quick. I wanted you to be able to hear him.
He's like, what would I do?
Go ahead.
Ken Long, 625, South Spring Street. I just have a few comments based on the conversation that was, was up here between Mr. White and the, and the group. I guess, first of all, I appreciate the, the effort put on. I know the special me, or none of us are at home, all that. And I appreciate the time trying to get, get this thing right. I have, I have no illusion that this is going to get straightened out tonight. Okay? It's going to be a process. And so, having said that, I do want to, I guess, bring up a couple of comments that were made, giving my two cents worth on that. I don't know the legality, but if there's a, if there's a tenant, that's the occupant, and they're a violator, and if the city can't figure out who that person is, which I find that extreme, can't the police just go knock on the door, give them their little, their little paper, and call today? I mean, and obviously get name and address and all that.
So, two things. We're understaffed in the police department, as is. And I don't know that the chief of police is going to allow me to borrow his law enforcement to go knock on doors for somebody that hasn't mowed their lawn. And second, I have to serve you notice, right? So, we can't knock on your door and tell you that your grass is too long, or that you haven't picked up your trash, and that couch in your side yard needs to go. The procedurally, how that would have to work, though, is the police would go out there, or somebody would go out there, knock on the door, and say, "Could you please give us your name? We want to cite you for property maintenance issues." Then they would come back to me, and we would have to prepare a actual notice with the pictures from that place, and then send it to them. I, I think that that would be a little bit burdensome.
Okay. Well, I understand the, the initial cold call. I guess I'll, I'll call it that. But if the, if there's, if there's a violation, then let's just use tall grass because it's handy. Okay? So, it's tall grass, and we have no idea who that person that lives there, who they are. You know, there's no water bill, there's nothing. You know, they, they never come out at night or whatever. But if that document is prepared, pictures, everything, and all you have to do is have somebody serve that thing, put their name on it, and it's served. To me, some of this stuff is pretty simple, rather than pin the tail on the landlord. That's, that's what I'm getting at. You know, you, I'm on record at the county, you know, who owns that property. Okay? That doesn't, that doesn't mean it's right, that, that I would get violations like that. Now, fortunately, I don't get that many that are, that are tenant issues, but I, I get some. Okay? But I'm still the one, I'm the one that has to do the dirty work, and I'm not the occupant. And if, if the ORC says the occupant, then I didn't vote for it, but if it's the ORC says it, that's what we need to do. Okay? So, like, once again, this isn't going to get resolved tonight, but I don't, I don't plan on leaving these, some of these things rest either. You know, if it's, if it's written in law, I have to apply to it. I have to adhere to it. Then I, I would expect the city to do the same thing. So, if it, it's not going to get fixed in a week. I, I get that.
But the ORC doesn't say the occupant.
Please?
The ORC doesn't say the occupant.
Okay. I'll, I'll have to, I'll, that's fine. Next thing, the ugly word, selective enforcement was brought up. And I think, I think that's a fair assumption what goes on at times. You're not the one going out in the street. Okay? You're, you catch, you catch all this after the fact. Okay?
I went out in the street this winter.
Okay. But when, when, when I have a code enforcement person there, you know, Gordon Grove, when he's standing there, wanting my properties, telling standing there wanting my properties, telling me, you know, either he's doing a reinspection or whatever he's doing, and we look out at the ten houses all around us, he's, "Oh yeah, I go out all the time to see properties that are worse than the one I'm at," okay? That doesn't sit well, okay? Because I don't see where this, we're aggressively taking care of everything in town, okay? So, and that came out of his mouth.
Taking care of everything. I said we're doing a good job with the resources that we have.
Okay. Well, okay, let's talk about resources then. If I got a handful of properties, I'm going to get my share of code violations from time to time, okay? That's just, it's just a numbers thing, all right? But when the resource card gets played, just like the resource card got played with the police and everybody else, that's pretty thin. That's pretty thin. If there's time for me, there's time for other people, or anybody else, not even me, you know? I get maybe one or two a year or something like that, so I'm not using myself as an example, I'm just saying, if it's not fair, if it's not, if we're selecting, if we're selecting, that's an issue.
No, we're not selecting. Anybody that files a complaint, we go out and make, put eyes on the property. While we're at that property, we look up and down the street while on our way.
Okay. That brings up a good point. When this property gets, somebody makes a complaint, and the story goes, it could have been a neighbor, it could have been the police, it could have been the wire department, it could have been anybody, whoever saw this thing going on, all right? Well, at what point is the owner of that property that's getting the pin-tailed on him, when is he allowed to see that violation, you know, the complaint, who signed it? That way, we can cut the Hatfield-McCoys stuff out.
Well, I would say that it's probably a public record, so you can make a public records request, but it's not really a Hatfield-McCoys circumstance because everything has to be independently verified, so even if your buddy, Mr. Hatfield, throws you under the bus and says that Mr. Long's property is a mess again, has to be a mess before I send you a letter.
Okay. I'm just saying, because I was told before I couldn't get that. It's a big secret. We keep it, we, no, I didn't say you, sir.
It's got to be a public record.
I didn't say you. I'm just saying, the code man, okay?
Yeah, I think it's a public record.
All right, that's fine, that won't be a problem then. Okay, comment about Grandma?
I love that.
I get it, she's on fixed income, she's eighty-five years old, you know, she can't, she's not fixing nothing, can't find nobody, hasn't any money, all that stuff. That's all well and good, but that isn't the code, okay? If it's good for one, it's good for all. That's called selective enforcement.
Have I ever cited you for sidewalks?
What's that?
Have I ever cited you for sidewalks?
No, no.
That's what I'm saying.
Well, you have.
I'm not selectively enforcing based upon people, I'm selectively enforcing based upon provisions of the code. Sidewalks, I will not cite for sidewalks because they are expensive, and we're going to have to come up as a city with a plan before I pursue that.
That's fair.
I selectively give you more time on structural issues than I do for trash, right? You get a ten-day notice for trash, you get a thirty-day notice for structural issues, and you're well aware, you get a notice on trash, rubbish, all that good stuff, you come and you talk to me, and we give you more time.
Right. No, and I'm not saying I'm having a bad experience, I'm just saying, while the fire's hot, while we're all here talking about this stuff, I'd just like to get to the next level as far as it being correct. So, it's got nothing, I want to make a very clear statement here, this has got nothing to do with me or my experience in the past with Mr. Gurnett. Now, Mr. Ratliff is a different story, but he's long gone, and if you screw up, you move up, now he's a judge. No figure. All right, so, I just don't, I don't want to, we're past that, I just want to make sure we're staying past that.
I think Mr. Stucker.
Obviously, my comment with Grandma, same thing as Puerto Rico, you know? Okay, so because I'm close, I could, I or anybody else could get tagged where somebody outside doesn't, well, there's still a remedy. You end up going to court, you know, you take away the birthday, you gotta do whatever you gotta do, so when...
There's a warrant for Mr. Puerto Rico.
Okay, that's fair, okay. Let's see. I guess I already addressed the problem with address number 111 and 112, you know, the first house has a violation, the second house looks worse, and may or may not get something done with it, so just, you know...
If it's seen, it's cited. Now, it may be in a different path, right? That person may have already been cited and we're waiting. Part of the issue, and I've talked to Chief Ostenheimer about this, some of these services of summons don't get served once we go to court, right? So I currently have a handful of people who had 2019 property maintenance violations that for some reason all of a sudden just got served. They must have been in a box in the police department, I'm not sure.
Okay.
So that could have been a house that we're not going to continue to send notice of violations because it's already marked for court, but nothing has changed there because they haven't been brought to court based upon just a lack of communication between my department and the police department. So we're working on that.
I know there's been a long issue with Mary Street, but the notices I do get is ten days, or thirty days. If I need more time, the office is always cooperative, you know, to work it out, because the ultimate answer is, we just want to get stuff fixed, you know, we have a common goal. But something like that, and I don't mean bring up a dead horse, but after eighteen months, I don't think that, that doesn't make any sense to me, that, you know, both of us could be violators, and probably after sixty or ninety days, you get tired of me pretty quick, and this thing's going on four times that long. I, you know, and I know that now we're in the court, the court does what they do, but still from people driving by, why not that house? And so, and I guess I got to, you guys are talking about a certified letter, I don't...
It's not certified.
Yeah, I was going to say, it's not a certified letter. Now, it should be, because in my opinion, it, I could go to jail for sixty, or for a hundred and eighty days and pay a thousand dollar fine. I think that's worth three bucks for a certified letter. That's just me, okay? Because I've had them posted on a property already and never got one in my house, and so if I hadn't have been driving by and seen that paper on the front door, I wouldn't have known it, but yet I'd be in court in sixty days because I didn't do whatever I needed to do. That's not right. You know, if it's worth everybody's time and all these resources we're talking about, then it's worth putting a certified letter. That way, I'm on the hook for getting that. And once again, it's going to get fixed tonight, I'm just, I'm bringing all these things out to try and make this thing smoother. And then just like on the other end, when the work is done, the city's happy, I've yet, yet ever had a letter coming back, okay, you're off the hook, we're done.
I think I sent you one.
I don't...
Because you told me, you gotta send me a letter, so I think I did.
Okay. Did I say incorrect?
But you've only got one.
Okay.
And that was because you made me.
And what that does, that closes the door for...
I get it, I agree with you on that one.
Okay, yeah, okay.
I agree. We should have a, yes, for your file and my file.
Yep, yes, thank you. I'm still open on this occupant thing compared to, you know, person owns the property, you know, in theory, here's how simple this works. I can't tell you tenant landlord law letter by letter, but if the occupant did something wrong, they get wrote up. If it doesn't, if a letter wants to go out to, use Jim B.'s example, to him, just so he's aware of it, I'm good, because then he jumps in a truck, goes over there, and they have a come to Jesus, and here one or two things works out. They're going to get it fixed in five or ten days, or he has the ability to sever their lease because of it. That's our recourse, because that property belongs to them. I may own it, or Jim may own it, but it's not our property at the moment. We're still technically the owner of it, but that doesn't mean we can go over there. In theory, I couldn't even pick up their trash because it's their trash.
Yeah.
No, I know that's a stretch, but it's true, because then they would say, oh, wow, in that third trash bag, I had a brand-new Samsung whatever in there, and, you know, that's why you don't go into property until you get released from court.
We also have the logistical issue of not knowing. So you rent houses that you also don't rent the garage out, right?
That's correct.
And there are certain houses that there's your equipment on the outside of the house that we're waiting on.
Right.
So some of it's logistical on our end, too. We don't know necessarily who's in control of what part of the property, even though they get the house or it's a duplex, and guy on the right side throws his trash out the window, and guy upstairs is mad because I sent him a notice, which just happened on Walnut Street, I don't know who's throwing the trash out, so I cited them both, and they called me.
There's always going to be those one-offs, and I agree, that's where the communication comes in.
Which I also think, yes, communication, and why we send notices short of just citing you like it was a traffic offense or domestic violence or something, so that we do have that initial dialogue, so that you can say, hey, this is so-and-so's house, and then I can send them a letter as well, and then you can go down there and help me and say, hey, clean up your stuff.
Right.
We're both, you know...
Yeah, no, I agree, that works smooth. Okay. And there's a comment made about, you know, we can take the owners to court also, or, you know, in, I guess, a hand-holing experience with a tenant. The problem with that is, that costs me time, that costs me money to defend myself when I don't need defended. You know, it's not my stuff, the tenant's being defiant for whatever reason, and I can't force him to do it. I can't evict him, okay, but that's got nothing to do with the problem at hand or within, in that short period of time that they're given to clean it up, and so, you know, it may seem simple to almost take you to court, you know, it's two hundred bucks an hour for an attorney to defend me, so it's not, it's not pretty. Let's see. Council adopted the international code, and I know Mr. Stucker had some suggestions about maybe how to, you know, do something different, that may be something worth looking at, but if you're going to have it adopted, then we have to follow it, okay? And you can't just pick this line and that line, and I see some of that, and so, that'll be an issue. And there's a comment made about the mowing, and I guess I need to get clarification. So, tenant doesn't mow, they get notice if they don't mow, then the city comes out and mows, and then sends a tax bill, sends that money bill to me, and then all this time, I wasn't even aware of it, because I didn't get any notice. There's a piece missing here, the communication part, there's a piece missing. It's when I get tagged on my taxes because that's easy, but it's not right, because I didn't get an opportunity to do anything about it.
Well, I suppose that your premise is that you're not actively monitoring your properties, correct?
I think that's fair, that, unfortunately, because I live and work in the same area.
I don't know how many landlords have gotten tagged for mowing bills. I think it's typically homeowners or vacant properties, but, you know, you're the owner, you have the first line of defense to prevent these types of issues, and as a landlord, I think it's a little bit of your obligation to ensure that your tenants are maintaining their properties in a safe and habitable place. You know, I mean, if I'm the landlord, I think that's my obligation towards my neighbors, towards my community, to make sure that my tenant isn't creating rats for my neighbors. I think that's part of the social obligation or code.
But before it goes to, we're going to send the city guy out there and mow it at two hundred dollars for thirty minutes worth of mowing...
Eighty dollars an hour.
I'm not sure about that. You've got one of mine on your desk, you know?
We have to send two people out.
That's not tonight. Once again, it's a communication thing, you know, because before, because there's probably a minimum charge and all that stuff, and because the one I have is like literally a twenty-minute mow, and it was a hundred and fifty dollars about five years ago, and so that math doesn't work out. We've had a conversation about that, but I'm just, I'm bringing it up because we're going into mowing season here in a couple of months, and while we're cleaning all this stuff up, I like to see it all get cleaned, you know, just everything at best we can. My last comment is on the board members for the review, okay? If the code you guys, or, yeah, the code you guys adopted says experience and training, that's exactly what that means. It doesn't mean something else, like, well, my grandpa had a painting company and that makes me qualified. That doesn't work, okay? If they have to be experienced and they have to be trained, then they're the ones that can judge. That's what it says. I didn't make it up. It's in the code, okay? And once again, I don't want to pick items from this piece and use this thing over here because that'll be a problem while we're going through this whole process over the next month or two or however long, you know, when that stuff brings up, I'm coming up, okay? I'm coming up to the podium, okay, because it's not right. You know, I'm held to, or we are held to, you know, whatever the city dictates, well, as long as it's correct and it's on paper and it's already been adopted and blah, 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 I'm good, okay? But if not, then that's going to be a problem. So, I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Myers?
Just trying to clear up a few more questions. When Mr. White referred to "we," were you part of the "we" in that?
Oh, yes, sir.
Okay.
I thought you had some.
No, no, so, Mr. White says, "We don't want the property owner to be cited," but then you just contradicted that, say, well, "We," as a property owner, or "me," as a property owner, I don't get notified of something. I mean, you're throwing both. Am I misunderstanding you?
Don't send me a bill, I'm easy.
No, 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 but you're saying that you were never notified that there was a problem, so...
With the mowing, or...
I don't think it matters.
Okay, good, we'll use the example of the mowing.
Yeah.
Okay. It's a house on Poplar Street about five years ago, I, you know, way after the fact, I was on my taxes. That's how I got noticed. When I got, what's this line item here on my taxes? Okay? And I got tagged a hundred and fifty bucks, you know, went to Ratliff, you know, oh, well, yeah, that's not right, if you didn't get certified mail, you can't do this. Well, you know, then, you know, he did for, a year after that, sat on his hands and went down to Alabama with a banjo on his knee, okay? And so, that's why it's not been resolved yet.
I get it. I'm just trying, we've got two opposing points, though, that remain.
Okay. Well, I'll unoppose that, then, because if it doesn't affect me financially, then I just don't care.
Right.
Okay.
That's fair.
But in this case, it does. You know, we got, use mowing as an example, just to see something easy. That's a tenant's responsibility, it's very clear, okay? They mow, they don't mow, then, yeah, I do, I drive around, but, you know, I'd say probably half the landlords don't even live in the area, okay?
How do I know, though, that it's the tenant's responsibility? Because I've mowed landlord's property for the landlord because the tenant doesn't mow. Landlords have hired me to mow. When I was a kid, I'd mow, my grandpa owned property, so I don't know what your lease says.
That's a management issue, because my lease is saying that I don't mow.
But I don't have a copy of your lease.
Yeah, some would probably be that.
Yeah, you can have, I mean, would it be simpler, better, better looking? I'm sure it is, but, you know, it works for me ninety-five percent of the time, you know, out of all my places, I have one or two, come May, they won't mow, they won't have a mower, they're going to borrow grandpa's, you know, it'll take them two weeks to get a check to go buy one at Walmart, and I'm just, I'm sort of, in the meantime, I'm going to keep, I'll keep and mow. Now, I'm not jazzed up about going over mowing somebody's grass, okay? So, that's, we have that come-to-Jesus conversation.
Right.
But that's what goes on. But see, where my horns go up is when it doesn't get mowed, the city comes out and mows it at eight hours an hour, okay? And whatever minimum chip charger is and all the stuff they come up with, because, like I said, you can go by the house, 205 Poplar, North Poplar, and you could crawl that thing in thirty minutes, okay? You had to mow it, okay? And so, but it was a hundred and fifty bucks five years ago, and so I'm sure the rates have gone up, and so, you know, and once again, it's a communication thing. You'll probably hear that a lot, you know, if something is out of whack, if it's a communication issue, just like the letter after we're all done with whatever code violation there was, you know, that's just normal business. Well, up until Mr. Gurn sent me this one, they say he sent, okay? I never had that before, you know, so I'm just out here dangling around hoping everything's all cool and, you know, it's just not right.
And then my other question or comment is, a lot of what I'm hearing, and I don't disagree with it, but I think a lot of it isn't, again, council's job is to pass the legislation, and then it's his office's job to enforce the legislation. I think a lot of the concern that you're bringing up is with how's the enforcement being handled, and that really doesn't belong here, that belongs in dealing with his office.
But it starts with the ordinance.
I understand that, and to Mr. Stucker's point, I think that's a wonderful idea, and I was going to ask, do you think that that's a good idea? Because I kind of wanted your opinion on it, so I think that's a great idea to revisit that.
I'm old enough, and some people here in the room are old enough, too. You know, thirty years ago, we had bocca jammed down our throats, okay? And this council chamber was jam-full of people, and three, four of them, or ninety percent were homeowners, because if you remember at the time, there was an article put in Cause if you remember at the time, there was an article put in Telegraph Forum about the size of the screen opening. You know, and, and it was gonna violate everybody's rights and we thought Nazi Germany was gonna take over and all this stuff. And so people like myself and our landlords, we're all sitting in a row and we're ready, you know, have a discussion and we never got a chance to get out of our chair. The, the homeowners came in here and, and knocked that whole thing down. See, it's, it's always simple to take, take something on a shelf and make it yours, but then you own it.
Right.
And that includes the training part, that includes the, the experience part and all that. That's, that's where, that's where it's gonna get, it's gonna get fuzzy really quick. You can't have it both ways.
But to that point, whoever is, it's the mayor's job, I guess, to appoint those peoples, is that what we concluded to the, to the appeals board? Okay. So if, if it says trained, but it, it doesn't, it doesn't say that they need to have this exact training, how, how do we rectify that? I mean, I mean, I guess that's part of the job to, for that ad hoc committee to look at. But I, I think when it's not clear cut.
But you see, if, if I'm being judged by a group that.
Doesn't deserve to judge, I get it.
Yeah. And I'm not, I'm not saying the people on, on that board fit this description, but if you have five people up there that can't hold, don't know how to hold a hammer, they're telling me how my this or that is wrong, you know, that's tough too, because it's, it's clear in there. So, and like I said, there's, there's gonna, there's a lot of stuff here we're, we're talking about, twenty different, twenty different items probably at least. And it's not gonna get fixed overnight. I just, I like the conversation though. I like the fact that we're having a conversation, we're trying to work it out. At the end, at the, at the end of the day, when this thing all gets solved, hopefully we all can put up with it and away we go. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just one final. You're not ever without a remedy though. Cause even whatever the appeals board does, you always have the right to appeal to a court of competent jurisdiction. So in this matter, it's real estate, so you go to a common police court to air your grievances. I mean, they're not the end-all, be-all. I'm not the end-all, be-all. I mean, you always have the airing of grievances at a future higher court of competent jurisdiction.
And that's, that's a good point. I've done that twice. I've gone to court two different times. Okay? Won both cases. The judge actually came out, looked at the house in question, got out of his Jeep.
Got out of his Jeep and said, looked at Ratliff, because it was Ratliff at the time, so I don't, this is not current, the current law director, and said, why am I here? And he walked that thing and he says, and he says, well, you've done this and you've done, uh, uh, uh. Yeah, here we are, you know? But, and then the, the ploy is, and I'm speaking with, with Mr. Ratliff, he knew at twenty, two hundred dollars an hour, chased me around and, you know, oh yeah, we'll go to court because he's, he's at court anyway, okay? Well, I, I'm not. I've got, I've got prep time, I've got my, you know, attorney's time, you know, I'm not, just to say hi, I'm on a grant. Okay? And that, that's a, that's, that's tough. That's really tough. Okay? At, at a time you're gonna gnaw on because you're not doing whatever and have a, have a thousand dollars out for a bunch of legal fees just to defend yourself. Well, then I, I turned the table. I took the city to court two times, won both cases. And just as a fun fact, the second time, Ratliff didn't even show up. My attorney went in and they do their thing, you know, behind closed doors, he comes out, we're done. And I thought, oh my God, I lost my house. He said, oh no, they, they dismissed the case, Ratliff didn't even show up. Didn't even make a call. But see, he got, he, he got me though because he's able to put me through that, all that legal, the legal expense plus court time. And it just, it just doesn't work anymore, you know? I was, I was working out of town at the time, I'm here in town now. I just want it better. I just want it better, I want it fair. I, it's not gonna be Ken's way and I don't expect that. I just expect it to be fair. That's all, that's all I'm looking for. Thank you.
Greg, Mr. White, now we're gonna.
Thirty seconds.
Okay, I'm gonna hold you.
This could help, Mr. Stucker too. Okay? Um, I was told by one of the property owners that years ago, the, I'm sorry, Greg White, eleven twenty-five Hillcrest Drive. Years ago, the city of Sires had a property landlord registration. Do you remember that? For, for property owners who leased property. Okay? I was told by several people that they used to have that here years ago. And everybody was issued, landlords were issued a number. Okay? So that the city knew who owned what rental property in the city of Sires. That might be something to help out the law director in identifying who owns rental properties because that would be a council thing because you could actually make an ordinance out of that to make a registry and, and a small fee.
Are you gonna follow your staff?
Um, I believe the income tax office.
I was just gonna make that point. The income tax office is already.
Because I know that my parents had to do that when they had a rental property.
We have to notify them who our tenants are with contact information and when their lease was signed.
Yeah.
So there's the information that is needed to know who's, uh, who's renting and who's not.
But I'll go back to ultimately, if my tenant doesn't comply with his orders, then I'm the next step. I think that's fair. So may I ask the law director a question?
Sure.
No.
The reason that we're here tonight was looking at fifty-three dash twenty twenty-three, adding of paragraph C. Given Mr. Stucker's request, and I, I think it's a great request to, to put an ad hoc committee together, would moving this on and adding section C help your office be more productive in doing its job in the meantime until an ad hoc committee can come up with anything better? Or would it be a waste of our time?
So I anticipate a full-blown new code would take six months, which puts us past the summer property maintenance period. So I would ask that we do put this in for this summer while we work. Cause there's, there are a lot of considerations, especially, um, bringing in and not just adopting somebody, but bringing in our actual own code.
Would we send this back for a first reading again?
You could do that, yeah.
Would that, is that the most procedural way to do it?
Um.
But we are, if, if we send it back, we're sending it back for what reason? Are we making some changes here?
That's what I'm asking.
Okay.
So you could send it back as presented for its third reading and final pack, passage. You could amend it and start it all over.
Kevin?
I'd like to make a motion to send it back for as presented for its third reading.
I have a question. What will we amend? No, I mean, I, I understand, we're, we're talking, let's see, the entire time, what, what amendments were?
I think, you mean, you're asking me?
Yeah, because you were wondering that before.
But I don't mean to speak out of turn, but I think sort of the general consensus, from what I gather, wasn't necessarily specifically with this, but in general, the overall scheme of international property maintenance. And the one issue with this was, um, the timelines.
The two years.
The two year, but, but being as I have to serve that specific person, that notification. So if that person moves, um, within that year, I have to start the process over with the next tenant and I can't overlap tenants and say, well, I served your predecessor in interest. Uh, I think that kind of alleviates that concern.
Okay. Is that understood then, Mr. White? Okay, Mr. Long?
Then I will second his motion to send it back.
Um, let's see, we have a motion by Mr. Myers and a second by Erin to send back to council ordinance number fifty-three dash twenty twenty-three for its third reading. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. Okay, and I also, for the record, would like to state that, uh, Mr. Myers did, uh, enter the committee meeting.
Thanks. Ben. If it helps, he walked in at six times.
Oh, and I had six oh nine written down.
I looked straight down.
That was at the door. Can, we also just request that Miranda makes a note so that we don't forget to request the creation of the ad hoc committee at our next Tuesday meeting that Mr. Stuckert's asked. That way it's not burdened on anybody to, to try to remember or for it to ask him to come and ask it again.
Especially if it gets to be one of those meetings.
Yeah, is there a way you could just make a note of that with the referrals to, to remind us that we wanted to do that? He wants to create an ad hoc committee.